Councilmember comments/items. This is when the council gets to talk about their, what's going on with them, things they want brought back for future council meetings. Councilman Andrisik, I'll start with you first. Do you have any comments/items? None for you. Vice Mayor Sanchez?
Just a thank you for the staff and management for the Buellton Bonanza. It was a good time and I'm proud to be part of it and enjoyed. Got a lot of good comments. Thank everybody for all the hard work and Kyle's crew.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lewis? Comments/items? None? Councilmember King?
Yes, I would like to publicly thank Davis Reinhardt, who I met with today and did a video interview. I think what he is doing is very noble and he is really doing a service for the community here in Buellton. He's a very bright, articulate young man and I'm sure he's gonna do well, even though he's a musician and whatever he does if he decides not to go that direction, but he's a-
Even if he's a musician?
Even if he does not pursue that after he's out of school, I misspoke, sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Even if he does not pursue what he wants-
No speaker slips for public comments? This is, I'll get a speaker slip from you when you're done. I just know this is happy. And this public comment is about anything you want to talk about. You've got three minutes. It doesn't have to be an agenda item. It can be an agenda item. You're just welcome to speak about whatever compliments, complaints, concerns. Please.
Hi, I'm Happy, Emily Otte Rattan. I've been in Buellton for a while and I'm a Buellton resident for almost six years. I'm privileged and lucky to live in a quiet and gorgeous neighborhood on Riverview Drive on the street across from Riverview Park. I went to the Buellton BBQ Bonanza less than two weeks ago, where I happened to learn of the Outbuild Children's Museum, the horseback riding, and the potential library and events venue that the city of Buellton is planning for the Woolson property. That's at the end of that road. I understand you're also entertaining perhaps adding a pickleball court and archery. And I'm unaware of any noise or traffic or impact studies you've done around those proposals and how they might affect the neighborhood. The city did a great job letting residents know about the BBQ Bonanza. And you didn't do a very great job of letting us know how quickly you're progressing through the decisions for the Woolson property. Plus, you're progressing way too rapidly. And I know that city councils rarely get accused of progressing too quickly. And while that would be great for, you know, roadwork or other issues, it feels like you're plowing ahead without proper public engagement opportunities for this instance. It feels like it. I request that you pause all plans for the Woolson property, including in the lower area. You stay in the exploratory phase so that the city court can more visibly reach out to the community and engage the public. In particular, the neighborhood directly affected by this drastic change to its personality, noise profile, and traffic. And that you do the impact studies, which may have occurred and I'm just not aware of. Again, for all I know, you may have done some of this already. But again, I've been unaware and I suspect others, maybe even most in my neighborhood and in Buellton are unaware too. When I asked why there hasn't been outreach to our neighborhood, I was told the city reached out over social media. That hardly seems like enough. And especially if we compare it with a BBQ Bonanza signs. And by the way, I still don't know what that social media channels are that the city used for these announcements. Lastly, just a couple of things. I want to say that I do appreciate your civic commitment and I know you have Buellton's best interest at heart. I just request that we pause for a moment and assess things further. I know the city has owned this Woolson property for over a year now. But that year is the COVID pandemic with its stay at home and, you know, safer at home and just general challenges. I'm rushing to get something in there now just because of that major pause doesn't feel like it justifies this rush. And on my end, it does feel like a rush. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you speaking. Any other public comment? Being none on Zoom or in the room, I am closing public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have a few items tonight. The minutes of July 8th, 2021, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal years 2021 and fiscal year 2122. Monthly treasures report, June 30th, 2021. Acceptance of the Avenue of Flags median two improvements project. Law enforcement services agreement amendment number one. And approval of city manager's amended employment agreement and revised medical expense reimbursement plan. Does council have any questions?
Move for approval.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Linda?
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Andresek.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sarah.
Aye. Thank you. Do we have any presentations tonight?
No presentations this evening.
Public hearings tonight?
No public hearing.
Councilmember comments slash items. This is when the council gets to talk about their, what's going on with them, things they want brought back for future council meetings. Councilman Andresek, I'll start with you first. Do you have any comments slash items? None for you. Vice Mayor Sanchez?
Just a thank you for the staff and management for the Buellton Bonanza. It was a good time and I'm proud to be part of it and enjoyed. Got a lot of good comments. Thank everybody for all the hard work and Kyle's crew.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lewis, comments items? None. Councilmember King? Comments items?
Yes, I would, I would like to publicly thank Davis Reinhardt, who I met with today and did a video interview. I think what he is doing is very noble and he is really doing a service for the community here in Buellton. He's a very bright, articulate young man and I'm sure he's going to do well. Even though he's a musician and whatever he does, if he decides not to go that direction, but he's a
Even if he's a musician?
Even if he does not pursue that after he's out of school, I misspoke, sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Even if he does not pursue what he's pursuing right now, I think he will be very successful in whatever he does. He's a very good kid.
I hope council has had an opportunity to talk to him too because he's a very bright young man who's trying to come up with a music and video for the city of Buellton.
And he also wants to bring the orchestra to town.
Yes, the Santa Maria.
Talked about that as well. Yeah, very impressive. Very impressive kid.
And I would like to again thank staff for the BBQ Bonanza. I got to go to a Girl Scout Bridge Ceremony last night down at Riverview Park and it's nice to see that the Girl Scouts, I don't know if the Boy Scouts are still active in town or not, are they? Thank you.
They were at our
Oh, that's right.
Memorial Day, right.
It's just really nice to see that we have youth involved in our community. Really, really nice. Alrighty, moving on. Written communications.
We have no written communications.
Committee reports. I'll start over at this end. Do either of you have any committee reports? None? Over at this end, committee reports?
We did have Arts and Culture Committee meeting, but nothing great happened to the committee. There's no new proposals as of now.
Thank you.
We need on the fourth Thursday, so
You've got, in two weeks we'll get yours. I had a North County CAG meeting on Wednesday and the only North County news is that Caltrans is working in the next five years. They'll be spending $30 million to improve the Alamo Pantato Bridge, where the bike trail comes out from the high school at Valley Fresh. They're going to be spending $30 million to make it more pedestrian bike friendly. Anyway, that was
Twenty years, I think.
The ex, just, just where it comes out on the connection.
Victoria.
SB CAG Measure A funding will be 1.2 million and Caltrans is supposed to pick up the rest for a $30 million project. Anyway, that's committee reports. Moving on to business items, we have agenda item number seven. The conceptual review of the 518 mixed-use project, 518 Avenue of Flags, APN 137-170-006. And I believe Ms. Tucker is going to get us going on this one. Irma?
There we go. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I first like to make sure that you can see my screen. It should be showing a rendering of the 518 project. And you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so the item before you this evening is a conceptual review of the 518 mixed-use project at 518 Avenue of Flags. The, this application is being submitted by Brandon Mann on behalf of the property owner, which is an LLC, but this property had previously been entitled by Cameron Amiri. Received its entitlements in 2019 for a mixed-use project. But Mr. Amiri has not proceeded with the preparation of building construction plans for the property. And the property has been on the market for sale. So current applicant is working with Mr. Amiri, who has authorized a filing of a new application for development entitlements consisting of a potential final development plan and potential participation in the Avenue of Flags specific plan development opportunity reserve program. And this would be for a different project than the one that was entitled. Ultimately, you know, once this project goes through the process and assuming it is approved, the previous entitlement at that point would be conditioned to become the on board. And so, um, the Planning Commission conducted a conceptual review of this project on July 15th, just last month, and provided comments for the applicant to consider prior to submitting a formal development application. And similarly, the council is being asked this evening to provide comments as well in form of a conceptual review. And, you know, the council's comments to the applicant will be taken into consideration and as they move forward in developing a, you know, refined project description and moving towards the middle of an application. So this is potentially the second project on the Avenue of Flags. The specific plan that could potentially be requesting consideration under the DOR program. The first project was directly across the street, just south, as Creekside Project. It's also one of the town corner plazas, which I'll point out as we go through the presentation. And that project received entitlements and it was a project that was also applied for by Brandon Mann and his team. So this is kind of seen as a companion project to that one and it would serve to really solidify and anchor two of the four town plaza corners in the heart of Buellton's downtown. So with that, I'm going to give a quick overview of the project. Basically go through the PowerPoint presentation. And after which the council may ask questions and the applicant and his team, the architectural team is available in person in the council chambers as well as online via Zoom to also give a presentation that would go into more of the details of the project, the architecture and their vision. And they're available to answer questions that the council may have. So with that, I'm just going to go through the PowerPoint and I'm hoping this is going to work. It worked earlier. There we go. Okay. And so as I mentioned, the owner of the property is 518 Avenue of Flags LLC. Cameron Amiri, the applicant is Brandon Mann. Mann, they are potential new development application and for a mixed-use commercial residential project. Known for now as the 518. And it consists of commercial and residential uses in two separate buildings. This is a vicinity map that shows the location. As I mentioned, so this is the project site. And I'm assuming you can see my cursor on the screen as well that point out things. Okay. And the companion project, the Creekside Village, is on this property directly to the south. The surrounding uses. So to the north, we have the San Marcos Hotel. The Avenue Heights Apartments are directly connected to this, directly to there, to the southeast of the property. The current use on this property are the residential multifamily residential, but it's basically a former hotel. But this is the property that has the entitlement on it. And across the street is the vacant lot here and Houston's Liquors here and Sistoño's Restaurant. And this directly across the street here is Median III, which is slated to be the Civic Plaza Civic Park area. And just north of here is where Median II was recently developed. In fact, it was just, the formal dedication was part of the consent calendar tonight. That was developed as part of the Avenue of Flags specific plan. And the landscape Median IV is diagonal to the property. And the entire property is in a hundred-year flood zone. And it will need to do grading in order to comply with the floodplain ordinance. What I would like to point out though is that this project is proposing something a little bit different than what was approved on the Cameron Building, which actually had raised the property above the street level in order to elevate the site out of the flood zone. The architect and engineers on this project are proposing a different solution that would enable the property to be, the ground floor to be located at grade, pedestrian level, street level, which is really the intent of the specific plan to have that kind of a pedestrian interaction available along the, the street. So I think I mentioned this, one of the anchor sites for the town plaza corner and it is a town plaza corner courtyard building as required in the specific plan. And the setbacks and massing are per the foreign base code, again, part of the specific plan. The underlying zone is CR, general commercial, which would prevent, provide for a height of 35 feet maximum. But with the specific plan, up to 50-foot height is allowable with either a DOR or in some cases a small height increase, especially if it's not throughout the entire property can be addressed via a development plan modification. And this property, I believe, is proposing a maximum height is 38 feet. So that's just slightly above the 35 foot in the underlying. So the vision for the project is to provide a commercial and retail presence on the Avenue of Flags. Target, targeted towards local businesses and serve the needs of area residents and the community as a whole. They would like to create quality multifamily homes with open space amenities. And there are proposed, there is a proposed central courtyard, terraced roof decks and views of the surrounding hills. The design is Art Deco and it's consistent with the Avenue of Flags specific plan and it does complement the neighboring developments. So building number one, which fronts the Avenue of Flags, is a corner courtyard mixed-use building with commercial on the ground floor, approximately 5,500 square feet of, square feet of commercial space at grade. Above which there are three residential floors totaling 16 dwelling units as well as amenities such as roof deck. And there's a catwalk bridge that connects to building two so that the residents can use the other amenities and vice versa within the project and not have to go down to the street level. Building number two, on the ground floor of this building, there is a covered parking garage at grade. It serves as the foundation and supports the residential floors above. And it also provides tandem parking for some of the dwelling units. And the way that this has been arranged is that the two-bedroom units would be the ones that would have the tandem parking garages assigned to them so that it would be the same unit that would be using the tandem parking. Above the garage level, there are three floors of multifamily residential uses. It's 32 dwelling units total. It's a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. There's a central common courtyard with outdoor living space, shared barbecue and seating area. So the density works out to 39 dwelling units an acre. And the Development Opportunity Reserve, the DOR program, allows for a range of 20 to 40 dwelling units an acre. So the applicant is looking to request a participation in the DOR program of public development incentives in return for public benefits. As I mentioned, the building height is 38 feet. There is a 15% inclusionary housing requirement, which this translates into approximately eight portable units, which would be built onsite. There is surface parking located behind the mixed-use building that fronts the Avenue of Flags as well as along the north and east property lines. So this surface parking is a combination of uncovered and covered parking. There is carport parking covered with potential solar panels proposed. And when the applicant provides their presentation, they'll be able to adjust this a little bit more in detail. So per the applicant's proposal, the analysis they completed indicated that there would be required residential parking of 77 spaces and commercial of 19 spaces for 96 total parking spaces required. And the project provides 100 total spaces onsite. So they are able to park, provide parking for the entire project onsite. And potentially it would be an additional seven parking spots available offsite along Avenue of Flags in front of the project. And the site is accessed via two vehicular access points along Second Street. And this is just a quick overview of the ground floor of the project. This is building number one, commercial, above which there are three floors of commercial. This shows the tandem garages at the ground floor level of building two. Again, there's three floors of residential above this. And this is where the exterior parking, uncovered parking is located, which serves the commercial uses. And additional parking uncovered and carport covered is located along the northern and eastern property lines. This is just a quick elevation along Avenue of Flags showing the property. As you can see here, just quickly commenting, the ground floor, the commercial level is quite high. So they're providing a really, really nice commercial frontage along the sidewalk. And it's a nice frontage and it's an ample roof height. So it really has a presence on the avenue. And here, this is from Second Street, looking at building number two. And it shows how the cursor to show, this shows. Well, let's move over here. This shows the commercial building height. I'm sorry, the level height of the commercial floor, followed by the residential units on top. And this first floor above the commercial actually ties in with the second residential unit. Second floor residential units in the second building. And here you can see the garage is located at the ground floor. So this is a much lower floor than the commercial spaces are. So it allows for a garage level and a residential unit level floor to be accommodated within the same height as the commercial units in the front. So that's how we are able to accomplish three floors of residential above the garage level. And the architect again can answer more questions about this and present with some more detail. So DOR incentives may be needed to address the increased residential density, as mentioned before, and any other items that may come up as part of the more detailed review that staff would be conducting of the project once a formal application is submitted. At this point, DOR benefits being considered include contribution, potential contribution towards construction of Avenue of Flags specific plan, public improvements, and any other benefits that may be worked out during the project re-entitlement process. And as with the prior project that came through, the Creekside Village that was approved for a DOR project, the ultimate terms would be memorialized by a development agreement, which would require city council approval. So this project would go first to Planning Commission and then come to city council for consideration. So the permits, some of this is, we've already mentioned before, is final development plan, development agreement, and potential other permits and discretionary actions could involve a track map to subdivide the property if any of the units are intended for sale. At this point, the applicant has indicated that these are for rent units. And other discretionary actions could involve potential development plan modifications to address deviations from zoning ordinance such as height setbacks, tandem parking, or others that may be applicable. to address deviations from zoning ordinance such as height setbacks, tandem parking, or others that may be applicable. So just some comments, staff comments. Commented on that solar carports are, it's a good use of the space, the carport space to have solar on top, but we would need to ensure that appropriate architectural designs, setbacks, screening and landscaping are addressed to make sure that some of the adjacent commercial and residential uses is not impacted. There's also a loading space that will be required for commercial uses with more than three thousand square feet of floor area, such as what is being proposed. And the tandem parking spaces will need further review for zoning code interpretations on how to make this work. Tandem parking is currently mentioned in the zoning code as an allowable parking type in Little Home Parks for accessory dwelling units or as potential incentives needed to achieve a portable housing mix. So this is something that staff would be looking at at the time the formal application is submitted. And we'd also want to make sure that there's adequate vehicular access, turning radii and safe vision clearance within the interior circulation on the project. So as far as the sequel review goes, depending on the ultimate density to be requested, a potential focused traffic analysis could be required that would determine if further environmental review is required as a result of that. So a detailed review of the plans would occur when formal application and fees are submitted. And this would inform what further studies are required for the project. So as I mentioned earlier, the planning commission has reviewed this project and overall it was well received. It had positive comments for the applicant. This is a summary of the comments. Those were also included in your agenda packet. But generally, the art deco and the overall project design, they said it looked great. Planning Commission was in agreement with the tandem parking concept, generally complimented the applicant on the parking layout. There were some questions about the location, a number of elevators and stairs. And it suggested that placing the adaptable accessible units closest to the elevator. The applicant at that time stated that they may consider a second elevator and mentioned that all the exterior stairs would be fire compliant, of course. Planning Commission did mention that landscaping is very important to consideration and it's important to use varieties that thrive in Beelton. And there was conversation about the width of the sidewalks and the comment that sidewalks need to be wide enough for not only walkability, but if there's going to be outdoor seating, wanting to make sure that those uses do not conflict with one another. And just added as a staff note, even though the, at the time this was reviewed by the planning commission, it was thought that, well, it was uncertain how wide the sidewalks were along Avenue of Flags. But the specific plan does require a twelve foot public sidewalk width. And it would be similar to what was approved for the Creekside project on the adjacent street corner. And which is, has determined to be wide enough for walkability as well as some outdoor seating to be looked at in more detail as the designs come in. So at this point, I would like to turn it back to city council to see if there are any questions for staff. And then applicant is here with the presentation. You know, entertain comments from the city council at that point. So with that, I'd like to turn it back to Meta Mayor. And I will stop sharing my screen at this point and.
Irma, thank you very much. I appreciate it. What we're going to do is we'll take questions from council to you. Then we'll bring up Mr. Mann and question him and then I'll open it up for public comment. So first of all, does council have any questions for Ms. Tucker? Councilman Sanchez?
Yeah, looking at the project that we had approved across the way. There's a property line in the middle and I think that the property on the other one is two pieces of property. And as far as that goes, who owns the piece of property that's directly behind that? There's a, there's an oddball shape. Okay, so the line, the blue line on here is the project. And I'm looking at page ninety four. For, I'm looking at five eighteen.
There should only be one parcel. The one behind it is the Avenue of Flags apartments, I believe.
Okay, we were looking at an old map then. I'm sorry. It's not a current map that I'm looking at. I see it now.
Any other questions for Irma? Irma, I just had one. I noticed when you had the planning commission comments, that one of their comments was they wanted to see the two buildings side by side. Did you have an opportunity to put that together yet or not quite yet?
So that is what they asked. They asked if, you know, the applicant would be able to to provide, you know, side by side sketches showing the two buildings. You know, we can certainly put a layout together, but the applicant is much better. They've got both of the projects and could do that. So when it comes back for a formal review, if that's something that the council would like to see, you know, we'll definitely work with them to put that together.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? Councilman Sanchez?
The other thing, when we have that, I'd like to see the elevation between the existing building behind as well, just because visually, like you're saying, you want to see one next to each other and see how that sits across the other. Because right now, we have a map that doesn't have.
With the Beelton apartments behind it.
Just to see, I mean visually for us to see it, it would be nice to. The story polls will go, but I mean, right now you're looking at, like you said, you want to see the buildings next to each other. I'd also just like to see the apartments behind, just visually, it'd be drawn in in the future. And the other thing, I was, the elevation of the parking was on the other, you made accommodations on the other property because of floodplain. Was there something different in elevations you had? Was that?
I can find the up there, but we had a podium structure, which is a concrete. But for this one, we were able to not have to deal with the podium, which was really prohibitive on that project. We were able to do the parking garage on the bottom and that also gets us out of the floodplain. So the podium got us out of the floodplain in other projects. This one, the garage is good for the residents.
Thank you.
Anything else? All righty, I'd like, the applicant can step up and give us a little more information. Applicants. Hi there. Nice to meet you. Well, and I see you've got Bethany Cliff Egan behind you and as a landscaper, you couldn't do any better.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Brandon Mann with the applicant. So I'm really happy to be speaking to you guys in person. I hope everybody still stays safe and healthy, but it's better than Zoom. I really appreciate being here physically. Last year, I was around this time, we were doing council on Zoom. That being said, I'm really excited to share the five eighteen project. I've always said that I think the City of Beelton Planning Commission, council and staff has done a tremendous job with the specific plan. It really is a kind of wonderful document and if you're going to do any development on the avenue is the perfect place to do it. You know, so we really do believe that the avenue can be kind of a nexus for recreation, shopping and living. And that's been kind of our goal from day one. The only unfortunate thing is when we were pursuing Creekside Village, there was kind of nothing else going on. So we're really actually happy to be pursuing when this project came available. Right after we got that one approved, we knew that if we were ever going to create a sense of place or a true gateway, we wanted to have two consistent visions on those two corners. And I think that's going to be a really good look instead of having just one new project up and waiting many years for potential others to pop up. So we don't consider them, you know, contingent on each other, but we do think of them as kind of like a phase one, phase two with the same character. And that really does help as well. I know during COVID, costs have been crazy. It's been difficult to, you know, get investments. So having two projects really does help kind of smooth the way for making all that happen. So that being said, if we could pull up the PDF that we have, unless David or Scott has it. I just want to talk about some high level things on the project. Okay, perfect. So can you go to the dispersy plan, the next sheet? And then David can talk about technicals. But with this project, it is forty eight, between forty seven and forty eight units, we will be going for the density. Although I know from planning commission and council last year, one of the main concerns was parking. So the unfortunate thing on Creekside Village was we had the creek in the back and a step back. We couldn't build on all of the usable land, so we really had to smush the building and that was with the podium. That's why we had to ask for that twenty five, thirty percent parking reduction. On this site, we're able to use almost a hundred percent of the site. And so we've actually gotten a hundred percent parking onsite, so we're not asking for any parking reduction. I know that was important for the council and the and the planning commission. That being said, we do have, we're not sold on it, but we like these covered solar carports. I think going green in the future with the state of California, they're asking people to start putting solar panels on everything. We think this is a good way to, without the podium, have covered parking for people when it's hot outside and also, you know, get some green energy in there. But that'll have to be something that the council and planning commission decides on. Another item is the tandem parking that we talked about. Planning Commission was very receptive to it. I know that it's not something that Beelton is used to, but I just wanted to make it clear that these tandem parkings will only be used for the two bedroom units. So in my experience, if I've ever rented a two bedroom or been a part of a project, it's mostly either people who are in a relationship or know each other. Rarely is there ever two random people that rent a two bedroom unit that can't coordinate. So these tandem parking spots won't be for a one bedroom or a studio that don't know each other and can't get out of their parking spot. We kind of liken it to, you know, having a, you know, garage and your kid is parked in the driveway behind you and you gotta just switch cars. That being said, I think David does have some pictures of what it looks like on the inside. They're pretty spacious. It also does help us keep that one covered spot per unit and get us out of the flood zone and not have to build a podium structure. So we're going to try to do it as tastefully as we can, but we do think that it it all is going to work out. And Dave, for you, I wanted you to know that all these are trucks on the to make sure we got all the trucks in there. That being said, we still wanted to keep the same character. So we have the commercial corridor going all the way down Avenue of Flags, which will match up with Creekside Village. And we even have a kind of roof deck, corner courtyard cutout, so they'll kind of mirror each other. The corner courtyards themselves will mirror each other. And then we have the residential kind of in the back. So that was important to us. I think one more thing that was important was even though it looks like there's four stories, because we were able to use the tandem garages, which are about like nine or ten feet, instead of the podium, which was fifteen for the first story, we were able to keep it at the same height with four stories. Well, it's technically three residential stories, one garage on the bottom, the same height as the other project that was three stories tall. So this project won't be any taller than the one that was already approved. It'll have a hundred percent of the parking onsite, so the only thing we're asking for is the density. But yeah, so that's that's kind of the overview. Really excited. We're hoping after this council meeting to be putting together our full on package and be submitting that. So you, Scott, if you could go a few more downs, I don't know if we have the actual like the three D ones. Like a one up. A seven, a six.
Sorry about that. Bouncing around a little too much.
No problem. So we also have, sorry.
Age and number for that?
That is, this is our presentation that should be on the PDF that was in the. So we have the roof deck in the corner plaza that mirror the other project. We'll get working on putting together like a side by side so everybody can see what it looks like. But we're really happy with the design so far. It's in this kind of conceptual blocky stage. But we also have Scott online that potentially we can share kind of the three D model and fly us through what that may look like if council so chooses that they'd like to see that. And then you go through to A A. That's the rear of the project from the back. So you have the commercial, you have the residential above. There's actually another comment that planning commission and council made on last project was the amenities or how much open space there was. So at the moment, we have about three roof decks, three or four roof decks conditioned on this project and a parquet, which will be on the ground floor, you know, for picnicking, open to the air. So we were able to get more kind of amenities face, more open space on this project than than the other one, which we're really happy about. And then if you could go maybe through, see some of the elevations. So that'll be looking down Second Street Avenue of Flags and then the second one, if you could show. I know planning commission didn't get to see, this is a new side elevation, but this would, what would it be look like looking at from Second Street into the project? And I think you can even see kind of the apartments in the back. I don't know a hundred percent to scale, but we'll work on that. And we wanted to keep that art deco feel. We also have these roof deck or these kind of catwalks that attach our bridges, the attachable projects, which we really think looks nice. And, and yeah, that's, that's basically it. Like we can go through the rest of the elevations where I have David here who can answer any more technical architecture questions. And if council has any further questions, we're happy to answer. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilman Endresic, any questions?
Just basically all stuck up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. The art deco style, right? There's metal accents as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, art deco is not the cheapest design, but we will do our best to accommodate.
Thank you. I'll go to my question from last time. Where are the kids going to play? Is there a place where the?
And if you can go back to the, maybe the regular first site plan. So we have this large barbecue area here on the ground floor. It'll be landscape and grass, which we don't have on the other project because it'll all be on the podium deck. So we figured that this would be a good space. You can also see there's a lot of greenery kind of in the corners of the project. There's one on the, I guess, the northeast corner. There's also one on the southeast corner. And then we have a corner courtyard as well.
This is a good sheet to stay on. Scott, I wanted to present this a little bit. So one thing that we really focus on with this project, you know, close to mind, is we wanted to have that full street frontage of the commercial and Avenue of Flags. It's really appropriate, especially getting the proper height. So I might also touch on the section you wrote. If you look, when it comes to where did the kids play? If you look behind it, you've got the common room there. So we see that as an opportunity for a variety of amenities for this residential. It could be a computer lab. It could be a storage. It could be bicycle storage. It could be a variety of things that could help kind of supplement and support that parklet courtyard right there. And that's kind of emphasized by the fact that we can't have any residential units on this ground floor because they're in the flood zone. So we're making sure that we're using that lower zone for commercial and we're using it for amenities and we're using it for parking. We want to make sure that we're a hundred percent purpose, as Brandon talked about. But one of the things that we liked about this design is the specific plan requires that each unit has one covered parking space. But when we did it this way with the solar carports and the garages, we actually have all residential parking covered, which we think is a bonus. How nice it is for the residents to have covered parking. The uncovered parking is just for the commercial calculations. So we think that's really great to have that parking allocated in that way. So you can, you can see that there. We also lined up the courtyards, I'm sorry, the solar carports with the adjacent buildings. So wherever there's open space on this, along the property line, we left that open. We made sure that we strategically placed those carports. So as you consider that, that's something that we thought was important. I mean, Scott, if you had to go ahead and switch over to the elevation in this section. I want to talk about the building height a little bit more. Irma talked about this a little bit. But right when you go into a commercial building, you need that volume, especially to be successful. You go into a coffee shop, you still want that volume. Gives you that presence on the Avenue of Flags street as well. So we're looking at this, we go, we have a flood zone. We can't put residential units at the bottom. Let's use the parking and let's line up our levels perfectly. So when you look at the section there, you've got a nineteen foot working height for that commercial space. And then it slides in and fits the parking and then one level of residential units as well. So when you're really looking at this project, both from the street, especially from the street, it looks like a three story project. But from the side, it goes ahead and takes advantage of the parking and creates a four story project, which really only has three stories of residential. So it really takes advantage of fitting a lot in just thirty eight feet of working height. The other thing that's really important to take a look at is our sense of presence, even on Second Street, we went ahead and stepped back. So Scott, if you could go ahead and go to our action jumping around, if you go to our. So Scott, if you could go ahead and go to our action jumping around, if you go to our floor plan that shows our our top floor, you'll see that on Second Street, we thought it was appropriate to take that fourth floor and step it back. So that was really important, so that this fourth floor really is kind of like the inside dome of this project, right? Everything is pulled back to the center so that this project has appropriate standing in any of the streets, either Avenue of Flags or Second Street. Yeah, thanks. Those little scribbles help a lot. And then on this, you can really see all our different amenities where the kids play. And that residential common that I that you see there, that actually is another common building that relates right there to those roof decks. So could be a spot that people there could rent out, have a little birthday party, whatever might, they might need that little space for us. We're really excited about what we could bring to the project with those spaces. I think that covers a lot of the different elements. If you go, Scott, go all the way back down to, you know, the last page there. I'll go ahead and talk about this tandem for a second. This is an example of what the solar carports could look like, really elegant, very clean. Just cantilevers over so that the cars don't have to deal with any of the posts. And for the tandem, you can see we, this is a kind of picture of one that's inside. When we were looking at this, having each of the two-bedroom units be lined up. So there's all nineteen of the two-bedroom units get this advantage. So it's like a full garage just for them. That's actually much more spacious than just a single car. So we actually see it as an advantage for these two bedrooms to have this longer tandem space. And it would look just like a normal garage on the outside, nothing different, just a normal garage door opens up and serves two. It's actually really efficient in design that way. And if you go to the last page, Scott, we had some fun, because Planning Commission was like, well, where where have these happened in our area? Where are they in the Central Coast? So just R M Projects, which is the company that I work for. We have, was it six projects there, Scott? Seven projects that we have done all the way down in Orket. Orket has found really success with those projects, even on the single-family residence, they've they've done that, this tandem parking. And we also have it in Aurora Grande and San Luis Obispo and Santa Maria. So just wanted to highlight a few of those, just for you guys' aid, as you consider this, who else has done this tandem? Is it successful? It's kind of nice to know that in the Central Coast it's going.
So these are, these are a proper garage with a garage door?
Yeah.
And then they'd have like a cabinet in the back to push what in, that's something they do?
Private garage is just for.
Is that part of the equation for parking spaces?
Yes. And it's also utilizing the fact that we're in a flood zone, we have to do something with the down, with that whole site there. And but it's only tied to those two bedrooms, right? So it's 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 making the count for the parking work, but it's also saying this is a two-bedroom. This is their tandem garage and so on and so forth.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
The two-bedroom units get the tandem parking. The one-bedroom, they get one space or two spaces?
Just a single.
One space. So if you've got a married couple in a one-bedroom unit, they get one space.
Yes.
And studio is one space as well.
All pretty specific.
I, it concerns me a little bit. I I know it's not your development, but we have one in town, Finger Village, where almost every resident there has converted their garage into an exercise room, a man cave. And most of the parking is being done on the street. And I would just hate to have Avenue of Flags turned into public parking. I think it's wonderful the way that you're you're creatively coming to solutions for this. But it makes me a little bit nervous.
No, that's understandable.
Scott, we condition the garages like as part of the CCNRs to make it so they can't do anything there. Because they'll be rented, so we, they don't own them.
I would assume that that could be part of your lease arrangement, that you as the property owner could prevent that from happening.
So it's a little different, because the other, Finger Village are owned.
Those are town homes.
They do whatever they want, but if we're gonna be renting these things out, we can more than likely condition everything to not have that happen.
Good to know.
And I was saying naturally, they're kind of inclined to not work as well that way, because they don't have direct access right from their unit, right? So they have to come down the shared common stair, go around and enter it through the garage door. So in order to use the space, the garage door would need to be open. So it'd be pretty obvious to any of the lease owners to be able to manage that. See, oh, are you going in there every day and open the garage and there's no car?
Let me ask our counselor a question. How did ADUs affected in that manner?
Thank you, Councilman. I had just taken that note myself. My belief right now, without looking at the ADU laws as it stands today, is that because this is a multifamily development as opposed to a number of single-family developments, that we have more control. If they were proposing single-family units, we would not be able to make, or we would not be able to enforce a condition like that. But because it is a multifamily project, that's certainly something we'll look at as they go through their process.
Thank you.
I may just chime in, it'd be impossible to get residential units on the ground floor, even ADUs, as it is in a flood plain.
It's illegal.
Doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. Speeding's a little too.
Any other questions?
I do. Well, on this project, and I didn't see it in here, the the original plan that we had done to this, and I I don't remember reading it, and maybe I just didn't see it. What was the original residential units in Cameron's project?
I believe it was gonna be eight units in the back and about twenty thousand square feet of office or manufacturing or retail in the front. But they, I don't think they have ever an intention of following through with building it. It got too expensive.
I believe they they had proposed residential units in the back, but that was not a part of their entitlement. They were gonna need to come back with a supplemental entitlement to to pick up the rest of those units.
So so the only residential that we approved on his Cameron's original project was for eight residential.
I I don't believe, and Andrea could, or Irma can chime in here, please.
That Cameron's proposal was, it was a two-phased proposal. And so the the two phases were shown on the property. Because it was intended to be a true mixed use. But the entitlement application that was approved was only for the first phase, which was the the front portion that consisted of the commercial uses and the showroom warehouse uses.
So there was additional space he was reserving for residential units in the back, but that was not a part of the original entitlement.
Right, and that's what I I just. Okay, because I just wanted to know if there was a residential element in there.
Okay, well, let me open it up to, and do we have any public on this? And anybody? Please, I have your slip. I'll add this agenda item number seven to this, Ms. Rafflin.
Thank you. Thank you for your oversight. I really appreciate your question about where the kids will play. I know that we're in good hands as residents. But just as you guys talk about parking, just want to know if there's, if you guys have a sense of how often two-bedroom apartments were rented by two people versus four. That's my concern, or you know, something to consider. And then the other thing I want to know, or have you guys consider as you're planning, is nineteen commercial parking spots? And I wonder how that correlates to the anticipated commercial use, you know, how populated at a time those will be, and if that includes parking for the employees at those commercial places. Thank you. I'm wondering if, what the tallest building currently in town is.
Thank you.
Probably.
Do we have any answers for that one? If if you can answer any of that, that'd be great, Brandon.
To the, to the parking question, we're parked to code. So basically, in the city built in code, every two-bedroom unit needs two parking spots. Every studio on one-bedroom needs one spot. So on the other project that was approved, we parked it to code, and for this one, we're just parking to code. We can do what we can to put in leases and condition, but we don't really control it, you know, four people want to rent a two-bedroom. That being said, the parking should be more than adequate. In fact, for the retail, there is so much parking on Avenue of Flags. I think we did a traffic study for the Creekside Project and there was maybe three hundred excess parking spots within, you know, a hundred and fifty yards or two hundred yards from the sites with the medians coming in. I really do think people aren't gonna be parking in the retail in the back. They'll be parking on the medians and walking around the retail component. So we're mostly concerned with the residential parking, make sure everybody has a spot. That being said, I think that with the hundred spots that are onsite, we'll have more than enough for the residents and any overflow. Right now, we have nineteen dedicated to commercial. Yeah, and the other project I approved was none.
I had a question. The 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 commercial space is, have you decided how many? Is there, is there a regulation, or how many, you have ten skinny stores or five fat stores? Or is that just something that's gonna change with the leases or?
Yeah, right now, we're just conditioning it as like flexible space, like a shell. And then as we get closer to rules and moving the plan forward, we'll start talking to potential tenants and figure out how to use that space. There's ten thousand square feet potential on on that commercial. We're only thinking about putting about five, fifty-five hundred to six thousand. One of the big deals on the Creekside Project was the fact that we had ten thousand square feet of commercial. While I believe that we can rent it out, it has been very, very difficult post-COVID and during COVID to convince any finance that retail is, you know, anything but a, you know, a Sears or a Booty. You know, they just consider it as a loss anytime you put retail in. So we're trying to be cognizant. We might turn that into flex common space or, you know, office or or something that we can use besides retail commercial. But right now, we have about fifty-five hundred to six thousand.
And potentially, just whoever the tenants are, because the size of the shops.
Righty.
Any other public comments before I close down public comment? And I am closing public comment, bringing it back to council. We are supposed to be giving comments, preliminary comments for this project. I don't think a motion is needed. Again, I, the parking concerns me, but as usual, the conceptual plans are really well thought out. I like that there's greenery, there's green space, there's open space. I I appreciate it and the fact that we're doing art deco on the avenue and and they're fitting in. I'm really curious to see how the two, since these are the cornerstones of the avenue, how they compare to each other. But I think it was very well thought out.
I'm excited to see some growth and some development. I think that maybe the city should look into programs that will help attract some commercial tenants. I think that that's gonna be a big deal for the city. It's great to have the buildings, but we need to fill them. So I think the city should have a hand in in some way to help that process along, because that will help additional investors take a look at Avenue of Flags, so.
And it is zoned that there will be no fast food on the avenue.
So a coffee shop would be great.
Yeah.
I could walk to one.
Yeah, yeah, that would be nice.
Madam Mary, I find this an attractive presence. I'm really pleased with the new look. It's colorful, multi-dimensional, not boxy.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with you. Alrighty, everybody's.
No.
Well, please, Councilman King, give us your preliminary comments.
Come on, Mary, know me better than that. The reason that really I think that all of us approved this Cameron's project in the first place, because it was mostly commercial. Wouldn't have a big traffic impact, wouldn't have a big parking impact. But it would be naive for anybody to think that you have a one-bedroom studio to not think that there would be two cars associated with that one-bedroom studio. And as pointed out, you're gonna have two young people, two young couples, whoever, or people, teenagers, more cars, more cars, more cars, ergo, welcome to Santa Monica. Okay, that is what happened to Santa Monica. They they, your seventy-seven cars may be up to code, but that's naive again to say that there's only gonna be seventy-seven cars associated with this project. So if you do the math, realistically, there are ninety-six minimum cars associated with this project, because you have put so much residential with it. We also have, what the bear pointed out, is a glaring example in this town. When we let someone build a hundred and fifty-five condos with garages that they filled up with the stuff they probably should have thrown away. Now their car doesn't fit in there, so where is it? It's parked on the street. So your other project, I was very leery of approving that. Even though, you know, it's code, we're gonna put a couple of cars out there, and I got two of them, right? Your car, the car, I'm telling you, cars are gonna be parked all the way up to the one-on-one freeway off-ramp. If you put something like this in there, that's just my opinion. I mean, I've seen it happen. You know, I don't live in Los Angeles anymore for a reason, because whoever planned that city made a mess of it. They made a mess of Santa Monica, of Venice Beach, you name it. You shove a bunch of apartments in, everybody's got a car, nobody walks, nobody walks in this town, right? So I'm very leery about all the residential element. And I understand, and I always appreciate your your enthusiasm and your and your desire to build here in in Deulton. But as far as I'm concerned, you know, I don't, I don't want to see this town turn into someplace I left. Right? I mean, we may have to take another look at this project again, and where are you gonna put all those cars? Because there's no way there's only gonna be seventy-seven cars associated with forty-eight units. Not not in a million years, you know? And like I pointed out, you took care of some of that element with the garages, but people are gonna do the same thing they did over that other project, what's it called?
Finger Village?
Finger Village. They're gonna shove gym equipment, their junk, they can't, don't want to store somewhere else into their garages. And the same thing's gonna happen. Drive by there tonight, see how many cars are parked on that road. And all those cars were supposedly supposed to have their own parking spaces, but they don't.
Now, the one nice thing is that most of the retail will be closed in the evening. So the nineteen spots there open up. And and the problem is that we have an ordinance. Our ordinance, unless we change the ordinance, our ordinance says it's one-car spot for a one-bedroom. It's one-car spot.
Battle I've been fighting since two thousand and eight.
And why haven't we reviewed it? Or have we?
Council comments items.
Yeah, there you go. And I understand that to make any money in a project like this, you need residential, it's it's continual income. And I get that, but if you can find another way to shoehorn some cars in there, that would be much appreciated.
They'd have to get rid of the truck spots.
Well, you know, some of that commercial may be staying open until ten o'clock at night. People come home at six. They're not gonna be able to park in those commercial spots, and where do they go? Avenue of Flags, Second Street. And the Crawford Family Wine Parking Lot in the back. And I'm sure that they would not appreciate that at all, already talked about it.
Any other comments? No other comments? Please, please.
Well, I appreciate your concerns, Dave, and I don't want to turn this into another Santa Monica, L.A. But to your point about the ninety-six cars, we have a hundred spots on the site. And that basically, if it's all for residential, we will have, you know, at least a hundred parking spots for forty-eight units. The retail will probably not park on the site. I figured that when everybody approved, I think the council approved Five-O, the Creekside Village Project, we asked for a thirty percent parking reduction. So we actually had only, you know, seventy percent of the required parking that was approved for that site. And for this one, we have a hundred percent onsite. So I actually have thirty percent more cars, spaces for cars on this project than I had the other one that was approved. That being said, you know, I think there was still an excess, a crazy excess of parking that was studied on the traffic study for Avenue of Flags. So I'm not as concerned about the overflow. That being said, the specific plan did study about three hundred and fifty units on the Avenue of Flags. There's not too many parcels that can be developed. As you can see with, you know, the motels, there's maybe only six or seven parcels. So these two units, these two projects together would be about a hundred and ten. That means that leaves another two hundred between all the other five parcels at some point in time. But the traffic, the impacts, that's all been studied by the specific plan. So all we're doing is designing to the code that was laid out to us. That being said, this project does have thirty percent more parking than the other project. So hopefully that will work out.
Well, and as I said, just because it's our code doesn't mean it was well thought. You're gonna have two people in single-bedroom units guaranteed.
With, and you've got a hundred spots on, hundred parking spaces. With, and you've got a hundred spots on, hundred parking spaces on the lot.
I do, I would, I would be more inclined, Brandon, if if there were CC and Rs that people cannot use those garages at storage or anything other than vehicle use. Because you know as well as I do that people are gonna shove things in their garage, they don't want to pay for overfield storage, and they're gonna stick them in their garage. You know, you can't, if you said it's two cars and they can't get two cars in there, that should be part of their condition of their rent.
That would be part of the lease agreement.
I'll talk to. I I would be much more inclined to to move forward with this if that is spelled out.
Will do. Thank you, Dave.
Alrighty, John, were you, were you doing this or?
I just, um, I was trying to figure out where the tandem garages are, but they're all within the the building. Or I just saw that, I was thinking they were further out.
Thank you for coming tonight, for showing the mixed-use project. I I would love to see a shovel in the ground on the avenue and see something. We've been talking about building on the avenue for thirty something years. And it'd be really nice to to see something move along. So we appreciate you coming in and showing us the preliminary ideas and listen to comments, pros and cons. So thank you very, very much. With that, I am moving on to agenda item number eight. Our contract with Cosmont Companies for Private Project Economic Development Services. This would be Mr. Wolf's agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you're aware, in last month, this staff brought to the City Council a renewed contract for Economic Development Services by Cosmont Companies. Cosmont has been providing the city with Economic Development Services for quite a number of years. Primarily initially, rather, evaluating the city for its potential for for economic growth and development. And in more recent years, helping the city with prospective applicants along Avenue of Flags and ensuring that the projects that are brought forward to the city are both going to be economically viable from the city's perspective, but also buildable and and viable from the applicant's perspective. We came to a a situation last year, given the increased interest in development along the Avenue of Flags, where the contract that we have had with Cosmont for many years wound up being insufficient in terms of the amount of funding that was available to be spent. The amount of funding or the the contract was let last year in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Typically, this is, this is more than enough. However, last year, there was quite a bit of activity, primarily with the four eighty Creekside Village Development that wound up utilizing quite a bit of Cosmont's time. The end result of this is that we ran out of money that we could spend from that twenty thousand dollars, even though everything spent on behalf of the applicant here was reimbursed to the city by the applicant. The contract simply didn't allow the city to to engage Cosmont any further. So this year, staff proposed a different arrangement wherein the City Council last month adopted a or approved a contract extension for Cosmont in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. However, that is only to be used for for services provided on behalf of the city directly. The contract before you this evening is a is a a different contract, a subsequent contract with Cosmont that would allow services to be provided to prospective or to property owners or prospective developers. And that contract could only be billed against in the event that that property owner or prospective developer had money on deposit with the city. So no general fund monies will be used to 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 fund this particular contract. It will simply be developer deposit fees or funding that is provided to the city in order to accommodate that. It's written into the contract that if there are no funds for a particular developer on deposit with the city, that Cosmont may not submit requests for reimbursement or payment from the city for that. They're aware of that, and at any time, they can give us a call and we'll be happy to give them the 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 balance of that particular fund from that particular developer. So our representatives from Cosmont, Ken Hira and Joe Diego's are here this evening via Zoom. They're happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm happy to answer any questions as I'm able. Staff does recommend that the City Council approve this this agreement with Cosmont Companies this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Wolf or for Mr. Hira or Joe Diego's?
I just wanted a clarification that the Cosmont's bill builds the city and it builds the developer, but it doesn't overlap. But so, I mean, we're actually sharing Cosmont services.
We are, we are offering Cosmont services on behalf of the city in much the way that a larger city might offer the services of the city's Economic Development Department. Cosmont would essentially serve as the city's Economic Development Department. But in, but rather than the city paying for that funding out of a general fund like a larger city might do, we have that that developer pay for the services upfront by putting deposit down and then Cosmont can bill us against that deposit.
Some of those costs could be shared if they don't have to double. I wasn't saying double bill, I was saying they don't have to double their work if they're doing some work that we have. And it's part of what they need, we're gonna be partners.
And we experienced that in prior years. The bill would come in from Cosmont and we would sit down and and decide what was purely a city fund city benefit, what was purely a a property owner's benefit and where that was to be shared and we split those costs. This will, this will make that a cleaner process.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, it would be something we both.
We're kind of intermediary, would you say?
Well, it it, yes, it's more of, I prefer to think of it as as utilizing Cosmont as kind of an extension of city staff. We're we're not hiring Cosmont to work for the property owner. We are hiring Cosmont to work for the city to ensure that projects that are brought to the city are what the city wants to see and are gonna be not only economically viable for the property owner, but are going to provide the economic development that the city is looking for as well. So we we could have a whole series of developments along the avenue that come in and are very profitable for the property owner, but wind up not providing the economic development that the city needs in the long run. Cosmont's here to help us make sure that that can take place.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Does the public have any questions? I'm looking for hands raised on Zoom. I don't see any. I don't see any out in the audience. I'm bringing, closing public comment, bringing it back to council for discussion and possible action.
Second.
Linda.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi, Councilmember King.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi, and thank you very much, Ken and Joe, for being on hand to answer any questions, should they arise?
Thank you, Mayor Sierra and councilmembers, appreciate it. Look forward to continuing our work with the city.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Jen, item number nine, the license agreement with San Ynez Valley Horseback Rides LLC for use of property located at two oh two Dairyland Road, the Willamston Property. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you are aware, in June, the City Council directed staff to prepare an agreement with San Ynez Horseback Ride, San Ynez Valley Horseback Rides to allow the operation of a horseback riding facility at the Willamston Property. The the agreement that is attached to the staff report is what the City Council has asked us to bring back. This essentially would enable the city to identify a portion of the Willamston Property that would be set aside for exclusive use by San Ynez Valley Horseback Rides. There are some additional activities that need to take place before that that can actually open. We expect that that will be taken care of here in the next several weeks, that it would include a planning department permit and and the likes. But this particular agreement is what the City Council has asked for. I will note that the the negotiated payment to the city for the use of this one acre property is thirty five hundred dollars per month with a total revenue projected over five years to be approximately two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. I'm happy to answer any other questions that the council may have about the agreement and the agreement is in the staff report for your consideration. Thank you.
Questions?
I guess I just need clarification. This is for one acre of the lower portion of the property.
That's correct.
And there's twenty one acres down there, give or take?
About twenty, yes.
Give and take. And we had how many meetings at the Willamston Barn? I know we notified, we personally notified people on Dairyland and Valley Dairy right across from the house.
Right.
We did a lot of social media. How many meetings did we have?
I want to say four on the site.
We like two open houses and two meetings in the barn.
Yes, two two open houses, and then we had, yes, two meetings in the barn, that's correct.
And a lot of the, we wrote down a lot of what the requests were from people.
Correct.
And the stables, that was predominantly popular one with maybe not residents on Meadowview, but residents on Dairyland, Valley Dairy and the community at large.
Right. I I will note, it may or may not address the concern of the residents on Meadowview, but staff's approach for all of these uses on the Willamston Property Site has been to avoid routing traffic through the the upper neighborhood here, in particular, Valley Dairy and Dairyland. But to a larger or to to just as much of an extent, any of the neighborhood out there, with the exception of Sycamore Drive. The intent is to bring all users of the Willamston Property with the exception of those requiring ADA access down Sycamore Drive into the into the Riverview Park parking area, at which point they can access what will eventually be a lower parking lot below the Willamston House. And from there, they can access whatever facility on the Willamston Property they would need to access. We, there are still quite a bit of planning that would need to be done to accommodate that for the library or any other uses at the Willamston Property. But the horseback riding facility can and and does currently exist with a dirt lot and they would be able to to operate in that manner in a more immediate fashion. But the access will will take place through the Riverview Park parking area rather than through the Willamston Property up top.
Question?
I have a site plan, but I don't have a plan where it is on the site. Paddocks and all that, but as far as the map of where it's gonna sit.
Well, and and I apologize for that. We we are in the process of finalizing those, the the exhibits for that agreement. But the the property that is, has been requested and is being considered under this contract essentially exists at the at the bottom of the hill, at the, what is it? The northern end of the lower portion of the site, just below the barn. It's, it's, it's in the, it's in the exhibit here, the dimensions of the property or the facility. But it is. I'm sorry, there's, there's a dimensioned plan in here someplace.
I've been on the last month, or not last month, but the last City Council meeting, I think there was.
Yeah, there, there, there was one, it may not be made a part of the agreement. But in essence, it's it's an acre in size and it is situated right where the access road drives down the hill to the bottom of of just below the barn there. So it's tucked into that corner up against the property line that is shared with the wastewater treatment plant and and the base of the hill.
Isn't that, I thought that's where the children's museum was.
Children's Museum is looking at area uphill from the access road, so.
Kind of crowding it all over there next to the barn. Because before I asked about having it on the west side, further away from the from the plant and the sample wells from the sewer plant. And then, so that I envisioned more of an operational stuff happening below that barn and park, you know, within. And then also the concerns of the horses being close to the, within smell of the mobile home park. And there's kind of.
Right, and there is that, and we did investigate the location, the monitoring wells and the 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 gradient of the property at that point flows away from the wastewater treatment plant and down, it flows to the south and the west. So it's it's moving away from the wastewater treatment plant. There is a a essentially a drainage ditch between the wastewater treatment plant and the monitoring wells and the the location of the stables. So we're not, you know, in 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 reviewing this, we're not terribly concerned. We're gonna see contamination at the monitoring wells because it's kind of moving in the other direction.
I just saw that more that it'll be more, but I guess this part of it is the part of the, but we'll have to have a road. This will give us a road.
This will give us a road all the way into that corner, correct.
And I believe Ashley Jenkins was very excited about it.
Let's have it close, that's cool too. I just, I just envisioned something else. I thought we were gonna throw them way down the other corner just because it was closer to the river and would be out of the way. We had any big events and stuff. I guess it would be out of the way.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually more out of the way here because larger events would take access from that other other corner, opposite, close to the river. But if the applicant wants to consider another location and the City Council would rather see that, I'm, you know, we're.
That's not a problem. I just, I just had a different vision without seeing it sitting on the plan.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Opening it up for public comment. Leat?
Thank you. It sounds like you did do some outreach. I'm very disheartened. I mean, it just seems like a, an oversight that Meadowview was not considered in this. This is our walkway in general over to the Willamston, like when we do our little neighborhood walk. But also Sycamore and Stan Drive, I I don't, I'm concerned about the amount of additional traffic that would bring. As far as the stable, I understand it's just one acre, so I don't know a lot, so maybe it's the right thing to do. It's just kind of all new to me and I would still love to. I would personally still love if there was a little bit of a hold on it, so or Meadowview could maybe figure out a little more of what's going on. And again, I don't know about the traffic and the smell and the noise, if you kind of done all that impact. And if you have those reports, I'd love to know where I could look at that. Also, when you guys, I'm not quite sure where it sits and something else that I know people are hoping for is regain access to the open space behind the park. And I wonder if you can leave room for that or how this project with the stables directly would affect that or maybe create that.
Towards the river, you mean?
Yeah, so if you recall, or I don't know if you know, but in the Botanic Gardens, there used to be an unofficial, there was a gate at the end of it where we could go into the, into the back open space. And it was, it, it was, I don't know if it was ever official or not, but it's been closed for.
Yeah, a couple of years. Fishing game, we're not happy with.
There, the the bird, the flycatcher was the issue that we would disturb their habitat, so we really can't, you're not really supposed to access that area.
Okay, although we are trying to create a river trail that goes from the back end of Riverview Park all the way to Solvang.
And I know that there's excitement in here.
Working on.
Working on that one too.
I wanted to also, so if you request, if possible, to just pause for a minute, especially if you haven't done all of those, like the traffic and the snow and the noise reports. And do reach out more to the, directly to Meadowview. But I also wanted to suggest maybe like expanding the botanical garden into some or all of that area, specifically with a focus on moving the Children's Museum or making that. I know they've been doing things in the Botanic Gardens and maybe that's where the Children's Museum could go. Or also, I know there's a move to create a community garden and I think that that area would be really, could be really terrific for that. There's an extension of the park and of the gardens and is much bigger than the proposed area on Second Street. So I would, I would love for those things to be considered. Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Sir, please, that's a step on up to the podium, please. This is the owner of Sunny and his Valley Horseback Rides.
Hello, everyone. Hi. So I found on my phone the, from the last minutes, this is the plot man who proposed. Hello, everyone. Hi. So I found on my phone the, from the last minutes, this is the plot map I proposed.
I know where it is.
John, John.
John would like to see it and Leah may want to see it, too.
So a couple of things about that. Scott pointed it out at the meeting. He mentioned that last meeting when I was here that, that, that map is a little bigger than an acre. And I, my proposal was an acre plus or minus. So I've since.
We're not going to measure it out.
Gotcha. So I met with J C down there and we tried to figure out power and water. And I learned that there's a four-inch irrigation line running up from the river. And it's like fifty feet from the edge of our boundary. So I thought, well, why don't we, because we're going to, we're, we're trying to get some water from, put a valve in there to be able to irrigate one of the pastures. So I thought, well, maybe we can slide the thing over and shorten the distance a little bit. So we don't take up more space, but we make it more logical. Plus, there's a couple of oak trees there that kind of get in the way. So they could be, put the oak trees inside of our facility, it'll be protected. And it'll kind of tilt the bridge at one stone. And so that's a nicer use of that. And the third thing, comment about putting it in the back versus the front, well, one of the things that first appealed to Scott, we talked about it, was the children's museum. We're going to have a petting zoo. It'll be right down the walk from the kids. So they'll be able to put down there for free, pet the animals and do that.
Would she be able to come down and visit your horses on her evening walks?
Oh, absolutely. It's all going to be designed for that.
There you go.
And so, so the petting zoo is going to be on the park, right, which would be the eastern side of it. So with the walkway right down from the house, people go for a walk at night, they can pet the horse, pet the animal, pet the cows, whatever. So that, that's all designed for that. And then the other thing about, so to answer your question, we, we're going enterprise. We're in business now, down the street, about a mile and a half. We run a private residence, we're very small footprint. We basically can deal with thirteen people an hour. That's it. So it's not a big old thing. So it's very, everything's by reservation. We don't take walk-ins, we don't take surprise visitors. So we do that, that's by control. So we don't overwhelm it, we don't overwhelm our animals or our staff. So that's one of the things I think that appeals to the city is we're, we're, we're a cool business and it's open to the public, but it's in a small footprint way. So the other thing about odor and smell, Rose sent me over the guidelines for this and, which was great to know. So one thing we're going to do, and I just bought it today, is we're going to get a dump trailer. And it's calculated pretty amazingly that every week the manure can fit into the dump trailer and go to the dump. So there's no, there's no manure going to be on the ground. And it also has a cover, so it will be covered every day. So the flies will be controlled and there'll be nothing sleeping into the ground. So that's part of the plan. So that's, we thought, thought ahead for that. So that's a big thing. So we'll be contaminating, we'll be smelling, we'll be creating fly issues. Anyway, those are my general comments. Any other questions?
Edit operation, you said there was a four-inch main. Is that going to be when the well is running or do we have a, or is that something that's going to be a?
So my understanding is it's for the irrigation at the house. It's controlled by the sprinkler system at the house. So whenever that lawn sprinkler goes on, that turns on the well.
That's the river well.
So when I met with J C, well, my assistant manager is Michelle Alexander from the Alexander Pump Family. They built that. And so I've learned that you know, when a horse drinks a little bit of water, it turns the pump on. So that's not good. So unless you have a tank or something like that. So what we, what I propose is we're going to bring a water line down from the house for the horses. So it'll be on the house water. And then we can put a control line in from the, from the box at the house to turn on a valve that irrigates that pasture and that will turn on the pump. So we're, we're doing this to conserve all that. So, but it would be great. One of the great things, the, the thing I love about this project among many things is that I'm going to have a spot for my horses to have a day off and go eat grass and chill. That's really important. I don't have that now and that's one of the reasons for leaving. So I'm, it's really important to me to be able to irrigate that pasture and let those horses have a day or a week off. And that's a thing. So, but we got to do it. That's what I'm hoping we can accomplish by how we design it and to be smart about it and conserve everything.
I thought of putting a reservoir in somewhere so you could just, I mean, just a gravitational, a little tank. Somewhere above, you could just have, you could just fill when it's full and always have a, it'd be easy to do. Even if it's just a little something that you'd have enough to use whenever you wanted it without having to activate the pump or the other one.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're not going to be activating the pump because we're running from the house line. Which is city, it's a city water. So we will activate the pump when we irrigate that pasture, just like the house irrigates the, the grass. So it's just going to be built in that system. So, unless we're trying to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I do know that M Nico, who you rent the property from down two forty-six speaks very highly of you. That she's very sorry to be losing you, but totally gets it.
Yeah, it just, we agree on it pretty quickly. It's their family house.
Neighbors are an issue, too.
We very much appreciate this opportunity and we're going to be very, very careful to guard it and protect it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, um, one thing I like to, we're going to talk much. One thing I would like to recommend is that any advertisement or pamphlets or flyers as such direct people to use other than the residential streets, you know, the, the ones with the driveways, Sycamore. Come down Sycamore. What, so we don't get that issue of, you know, residents saying, oh, these people are driving far through my town, you know. So, you know, if you put anything in that web or whatever, giving people directions to that. On your advertisement.
They come straight down Sycamore to the park.
So everything is by reservation. So they get an email with the direction. So we'll tell them exactly where to go.
Got you.
I don't, I'd love to be able to get Willamston's permission to be on the sign at the corner that says, you know, wine tasting this way, art department this way, horseback riding that way.
Something to work on.
Yeah. So, but we don't have to, our business is in a lock-in business, so we don't have to have people, we don't have to sign up on the street. So that's a, a good thing. And we do want to bring them through the park for sure. That way they won't be going from the house. I think that's not, that road's not built for that. And the park, that's going to be on their site anyway. So I, I hear it.
Some of us are sign pollution adverse.
He just wants to add a little. He just wants. Yeah, he's, he's got his spot picked out.
I think that's our benefit as well, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. One, one more, and then I'm going to close it to public comments so we can.
I thought you guys were talking about bringing traffic in from industrial.
Eventually, it's going to require more work.
So temporarily, or, okay.
For now.
And then the other, then another question, are the horses, I mean, this can be good or not good, are the horses going to be coming through the neighborhood or?
They're going to go out towards the river and use the path, existing paths, but are you going on the river?
Okay. The, the path where the birds are?
Horses for the, the fishing game has no problem with horses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm closing it to public comment, bringing it back. I, I do know that council has moved forward with putting the library in the Willamston House along with another profit-making business, although we haven't decided that. And the library we're looking at is going to be about a year off. There's some work done on the house.
Yeah, at, at least that, given the, the work that will need to be done to, to, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the house to bring it up to standard.
So council has approved that. We've approved the horseback. We've approved the children's museum. We're still doing a lot of community outreach for the barn. We haven't figured out anything with the barn yet.
Nothing on the barn yet.
Or whether there's going to be any other activity on the lower portion or the upper portion, what we're going to do with that.
I, I've given all the, the parties that have expressed interest, either, either at the meeting or for those who couldn't have been at the last meeting at the barn through email, I've given them notice that because they're, the space they're looking at has not been contested, they just need to come and bring to staff a proposal. And then we'll bring that to the city council for consideration.
And Linda, when are we doing the next Willamston Barn? Isn't it the end of this month? What are we planning?
We, we were, we are planning a, a special meeting on the twenty-eighth of August. However, in my manager's report, I was going to bring up this evening that the, the meeting on the twenty-sixth of August, our regular city council meeting is rather light on the agenda. And so it may be desirable for the city council to hold the meeting at the Willamston House on Thursday night, take care of the very short agenda we would have for the regular city council meeting. And then include this workshop as part of that agenda.
And anybody who's working that is able to come and we can make sure that residents on Meadowview are included in, in notification.
We will take a look at that, yes.
Alrighty.
Did you say twenty-sixth of August?
Our next city council.
Regular meeting.
Well, instead of having it here, it'll be down at the barn.
At the, at the house.
At the house.
The house.
Then Eric, there was a shindig on October sixteenth.
That's something different.
That's, that's a, yeah, there's a, there's, there's a, an event that's planned that will be announced here. I'm, I'm assuming shortly, if it hasn't been already, for October sixteenth, correct.
Alrighty, getting back to our agenda, comments, motions.
I move that we approve the lease agreement with Sunny and his Valley Horseback Rides LLC for the use of property located at two, two Dairyland Road.
Okay, Linda?
Okay, Councilmember King.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrew.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sarah.
Hi. Alrighty, moving on to agenda item number ten, our update regarding the state drought conditions, Ms. S.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is just a, a brief update. Let's let you know the state's activities regarding drought conditions. Earlier in the year, Governor Newsom signed emergency declaration identifying several counties within the state for an emergency regarding drought for serious water supply issues. In July, he also expanded that declaration to include fifty additional counties within the state for the drought state of emergency. And this time it included Santa Barbara County. So that includes our particular area. This isn't a declaration with a mandated water reduction, water use reduction. This is a voluntary reduction for water use of, by fifteen percent as compared to the twenty-twenty levels. So this is precautionary at this point, as far as the state goes, as there, although they are requiring other state agencies to do other measures within their own agencies for water conservation. But statewide, at this point, it is just a voluntary reduction. And the point is to get all the residents and businesses of California on that mindset, start conserving. You know, we haven't had any rains. The heat is just increasing throughout the year. So that makes for a poor combination as far as water supply. As I mentioned, again, this is a voluntary reduction, but it, it is an outreach that the city has actually been doing throughout the year. Just to remind, you know, citizens, we, let's be cognizant about the importance of our water supply. We have, we do not have an issue, I'll make that clear, it, within the city as far as our water supply currently. But, you know, divest development continues. We have people moving in, businesses starting. We want to preserve as much of our water supply as we can, just to make sure that we're sustainable into the future. So we want to make that message consistent and consistent throughout the county as well. We, you know, believe that if everyone voluntarily conserves the water use, that we hopefully should not be able, should not be put in a position where mandated water reduction is required like it was several years ago. So at this point, there are several resources on the web, savewater.org, as well as the city's website, our, our Bulton Green Scene website also has resources as far as water conservation. Changing the timer, day use for irrigation. And just being in the mindset that you want to reduce water use as much as possible. So with this, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
I had a question and Scott answered. We, our well here puts out a thousand gallons a minute. Our well nine.
Yes, yeah, we haven't had any reduction in capacity of, of our wells.
And we also have the, the, they're releasing water for the river wells right as we speak. I understand. They're releasing water right now. So is that, those wells will be, it has to come through us to get to Lompoc. So I think we're looking good. The water has to get to Lompoc because I understand it.
Correct. And it'll be released to Lompoc, I believe, through October or November. So, yes, we are fortunate to have the, our positive side effect to our water supply by that release.
I wonder how much the new cannabis farms are going to take water-wise on its way down to Lompoc.
Yes, that, I'm.
I mean.
They'll be limited to their well capacity as well, but it does all affect.
Does.
I don't think there's any between the, the lake and us. There's no up farms yet. So I think we're looking good.
No, not that way, the other way. I did have, didn't we once have an ordinance about not watering between six P M. and eight in the morning or something?
We do. Yet there's a recommended hours of when you should be watering. And that's still, when we've recently, I can't remember which Buzz series went out earlier in this year, had the same timeframe as that. We're continuing to recommend that it, that, that be the timeframe to irrigate.
But we're not going to, we're not at a point where we need to start enforcing, I mean, solvings. Remember, they got to where they were doing days. You can only water on Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Yeah, we, we haven't identified anything. We're not there. Yes.
Yes, asking people to please cut back.
Right, right. Again, and if everybody does, hopefully we don't have to go to that step. That's the goal.
I think everybody pretty much is, and, you know, it's to everyone's benefit as well. And some are probably cutting back a lot more than fifteen.
Right.
There's a lot. So I think, I don't think there's any need for us to create any other rules. I mean, everybody's following the rules, I think.
Okay, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Any speakers? Closing public comment, bringing it back to a council for direction to staff. Keep up the good work.
Yeah.
I think Steph.
Keep promoting through the buzz, keep promoting through the green team, just get out the word. I appreciate, I, at our Bulton BBQ Bonanza, we had a booth and I appreciate that. Alrighty. Moving on, thank you very much, Rose. Moving on, discussion regarding city's reserve policy. We get to hear from our finance director, Chanel Zamora. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is a draft financial policy that updates the city of Bulton's reserve policy. The last time the city of Bulton City Council discussed the policy was back in two thousand and eleven, which is ten years ago. Attachment one of your staff report shows the current policy and the staff report. At this, at this point in time, a fund reserve policy was established to comply with GASP B fifty-four, which required a new classification of, of fund balance categories. Since the adoption of the current reserve policy, the city has experienced multiple consecutive years of surpluses, which has helped absorb the use of reserves during the pandemic. Staff deemed appropriate at this time to discuss the general fund policy reserve and adopt a formal policy that takes in consideration best practices set forth by the Governor's Finance Officers of America, otherwise known as the GFOA organization. But before we review the policy, I want to go over the portion of the fund balance that is referred to as the city's reserve. Because usually there's confusing, confusion about what is considered a reserve balance versus a fund balance. When we refer to the city's reserve fund, we are talking about the unrestricted fund. When we refer to the city's reserve fund, we are talking about the unrestricted fund balance, which is made out of the committed, assigned and unassigned balance. The fund balance is a measure of the financial resources available. And the unrestricted fund balance is the portion of the fund balance that reflects expendable available financial financial sources. And for this particular or for the reserve policy, we're looking at that unassigned balance to set up a percentage of operating expenditures to be the level of reserves to be maintained. The current policy that was adopted back in two thousand eleven does not actually specify what the percentage is. If you look at the staff report from June twenty three, two thousand eleven, staff recommended that the city council set fifty percent of the operating expenditures as a reserve. At this point in time, staff recommends lowering that percentage to thirty five. And attachment two is the framework that was used to determine the percentage. This template that was used is from the GFOA. What they what this template looks at is different sources. So it is essential that the city maintain adequate levels of an unassigned fund balance to mitigate mitigate financial risk that can occur from vulnerability to extreme events, revenue source stability, expenditure volatility, leverage, liquidity, which are the cash flows, dependence of other funds on the general fund, growth, revenue and expenditure balances, and funding of capital projects. So the draft policy, which is attachment three, includes a thirty five percent of operating expenditures as the minimum level of reserves to be maintained. It also identifies possible uses for surpluses in excess of those needed to establish a thirty five percent reserve level. The city council should review these potential uses and may wish to prioritize certain uses to maintain the city's financial health. Staff would suggest prioritizing the payment of the unfunded accrued liability, otherwise known as the U A L for the Calpers passion fund, as well as other post employment benefits, which is O P E V, such as the retiree medical benefits. This type of prioritization will enable the city to ensure that years with higher revenues can help pay down those obligations. If city decides to prioritize these any amounts for these uses, it can be discussed at a later time and would be adopted at a different with a different resolution. There is no direct fiscal impact in discussing updated the general fund reserve policy. The updating of the policy will only strengthen the city's ability to navigate to make challenges and provide the city with the means to respond to opportunities with a healthy reserve policy. Staff recommends that the city council discuss the city's reserve policy, direct changes as suggested by council and direct staff to bring back a resolution amending the current fund balance reserve policy. And I am open to any questions the city council may have.
Thank you very much. First of all, council, any questions for Ms. Zamora?
Yeah, is the reduction from an informal fifty percent reserve to the more formal thirty five percent reserve? Is that with any particular expenditure in mind or that it's a more reasonable percentage rather than a high fifty percent?
It's more reasonable percentage, and if you look at the current expended operating expenditure of eight million is about two point eight million in reserves. And kind of the reason why we went with the thirty five on the unassigned is because it allows in the future, if we do want to come back, let's say, a pension policy, we have a buffer, so we could potentially do fifteen percent or any amount that city council and ultimately go up to the current fifty percent. So again, it just allows for other uses of the general fund balances, such as I mentioned, assigned or the committed funds.
Okay, and we are setting this as a minimum reserve, not like we want to reserve at thirty five. So there is no forced expenditure or forced assignment or forced committal of any other ending fund balance if it's in excess of the thirty five percent.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, so this is a minimum of thirty five.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, where where are we sitting right now with our reserves?
Our reserves are at eight point one million dollars right now.
But there's percentage for.
That percentage. Let me see if I have it up.
A hundred percent of our reserves are.
We're over a hundred percent of our reserves right now. Yeah, our current budget shows about a hundred and nine point five percent over our reserve.
Madam Mayor, if I can comment just real briefly, I'd just like to let the city council know th- this item's not being brought forward to the city council because we have a concern about city's financial position. This item has been brought forward to the city council because it's it's been my desire since I've gotten here that I would like to have some direction from the city council as to how we address the fact that the city brings in more money than our operating expenses require on an annual basis. And the same way that we we plan our land use, it's it's a wonderful thing. But in the same way we plan our land use and our zoning, it would be nice to plan our our finances so that the city council and the public are aware that during those years where we have a surplus of revenue, there's at least some direction as to how that revenue is going to be either expended or saved, where it's going to go to. That doesn't obligate the city council to take any particular action should we we have a windfall or a large surplus in a given year. But it provides direction to staff, to the current city council and to future city councils as to what what the desire was when this happens. That's all that we're looking for is to give everybody some idea as to how this money should be spent in the future. And for that, we're looking for the council's direction right now.
Alrighty, thank you.
I would be curious to know what kind of presents our surrounding areas, say, county or Northern California, Southern California, what what are the other entities doing? Because we.
Although you do know, Councilman Andrejic, that Bilton is the mover and shaker.
That's right.
Of Santa Barbara County.
I think it's also like it's also hard from a financial perspective to compare the budget of one city to the budget of another because there are different sources of revenue and depending on those revenue streams and how they come in and what they're dependent on. If your revenue streams are guaranteed every year, you need less of a reserve than if your revenue streams are you know, depending on like taxes.
That's the micromanaging part that we worry about because people saying you don't need that.
Like a neighbor city with tourism, when COVID comes, their their budget is shot to pieces. And yet we've we've been pretty steady.
We've been good. Our finance director may have some idea what some of the other jurisdictions are like. But I I will just note that the GFOA identifies the thirty five percent as as based on the template that Chanel has gone through here is a good, solid place to ensure the city remains solvent going forward.
Minimum.
Even in the event of a disaster. As has been mentioned a couple of times here, we can compare our reserves and our revenue stream to that of Solvang or the county or Santa Maria. But we know from just what we've seen in the past year, solving's revenue stream is much different than Bilton's revenue stream. Our revenue stream is very diversified. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of protection against big swings like we saw in the last year, more so than I think most cities in our region have. So this is just an attempt to, again, provide an additional layer of protection, an additional layer of assurance to the council and to the public that we're on top of things and we know how revenues will be spent should we come in with a surplus again.
And it's a measuring measuring tool that communities can rank themselves on because we we have a lady today that was kind of giving us our percentage performances in the past. And and I think that's that's helpful for everyone to hear.
Okay, any other questions before I go to public comment? Opening it up to public comment. Don't see anybody in the public. I am closing public comment, bringing it back. I just have to say that I appreciate that our staff has the foresight to plan. I mean, I am so proud that Bilton is fiscally responsible. I mean, we are in such better shape, such good shape, much better than other communities. And part of it is because of staff and part of it is because our council is really good at
any pinching.
Really, really good at looking at numbers. We.
It's up to dollar pinching.
So I really appreciate this. I think it's a great idea. I think our retirement funding is going to be an issue. It is an issue with a lot of cities, not with ours right now. I think that if we go with the thirty five percent reserves and then put just choose to put money, say, maybe into retirement funding and infrastructure slash capital projects. We've had to put off some of our capital projects because we haven't been able to get, we've been very conservative about funding them with everything going on. I those those would be the two areas that I would, I think we should be looking at, but yes.
You know, I think this is an opportunity to establish perhaps a workshop review or a a presentation by from financial planners that talk about communities and and what the percentage is, how it relates to what they what they put away. Because there's, you know, sometimes you can ruin a community by not upgrading or keep staying up with the time. And I think we're we're pretty state of the art with our mechanical stuff, our operations and our and our feasibility. I don't I don't know of anything that we are grossly negligent in being able to provide water, sewer, bit air, air quality. I think it's 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 an all encompassing umbrella that we need to be aware of. And I think I think we're we are up to it. But maybe a workshop would be in order for if you if staff thinks that, you know, we're going to have a league.
League of cities.
League of cities, and that I'll probably try to ask if we can, you know, have if other communities are dealing with that that unknown. Did you pick up the paper and you, oh, bankrupt? How did that happen?
We're we're too on top of it. Comments from this end?
Chanel, I like the general reserve fund policy draft that you have before us. And I especially like item six, where you talk about what we'll be doing with the excess reserves and the fact that you leave them as maize so that we can choose any of those options. And I think the options are very fiscally prudent, so I don't see any edits or requests for changes that I would make with the exception of perhaps using this as a guiding document under item six, add a number five, other uses as the city may deem, you know, appropriate. I know it's probably not necessary because we have that authority anyway. But if we're using this as a guiding document for future years, it might be nice to not have people read it, you know, lay people read it and think that they're limited to those four items. So just maybe a fifth item, you know, other uses as defined or other uses as deemed appropriate, just so that it's more digestible for a layperson to know that these are not our only options for excess reserves, but that these are are prioritized options. But other than that, I don't see any draft edits that I would request.
Thank you. But we'll add that five item.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do think the nice thing about a budget or a plan like this is that it is a living, breathing document and that it can be adjusted and changed as we go on. If we decide to go ahead and bring back a resolution amending the fund balanced reserve policy, and then we go to League of Cities and we talk to cities and we find out new ideas. This can be changed and altered and and yeah.
Correct.
But.
So based on the comments that I'm kind of hearing right now, it sounds like the we haven't heard from Councilmember King.
No.
So based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like the draft policy that's in place here with the addition identified by Councilmember Lewis is adequate moving forward and that you've identified O P E V costs, pension, excuse me, U A L costs, I always forget what U stands for in U A L, but it has to do with our pension costs and unfunded accrued liabilities. And and then infrastructure costs as priorities for surpluses in excess of our thirty five percent root reserve to be used. So based upon that guidance, we will, when when budget time comes, come forward with recommendations for dealing with our surplus each year, which take those suggestions into consideration so that we can bring you recommendations, which you can take or leave depending upon what your priorities are at the moment.
Yes.
Is there is it a motion?
Just just direction, and then they'll bring a resolution back to council. Okay, we're all in agreement?
Yes, I think.
Excellent. Alrighty, on to the city manager's report.
All right. Sorry.
I was thinking.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, two items on on the report tonight. The first one has to do with the meeting we've already discussed. We had a special meeting scheduled for Saturday, the twenty eighth of August. But it looks like given our our likely light agenda that night, we will more than likely be changing that meeting, that special meeting to be a part of our regular city council meeting on Thursday, the twenty sixth. And we will have that meeting rather than being held here, it will be held at the Williston House, which I believe then makes it a special meeting and not a regular meeting, if I'm not mistaken. So we will agendize that as such. And that will be at six o'clock as our meetings typically are. If there is a change to that, we will let you know and and agendize accordingly. The second item I have, several of you are aware of this already. Back in two thousand nineteen, there was an event held in Solvang called Fall Fest. It was a community carnival held downtown. The organizers from Fall Fest have approached the chamber and asked, basically, they're they're wanting to move to Bilton. I've met with the with the organizers of that event. We started some discussions, had them contact our planning department, public works department. The event would be a community carnival held in Bilton, in fact, on the Avenue of Flags between median three and actually the property that was discussed tonight for the mixed use development five eighteen Avenue Flags. It would be from November twelfth through the fourteenth. There would be a setup the night before on the eleventh and then take down probably starting on the evening of the fourteenth and leading into the the morning of the fifteenth. There are some issues that are different from what I addressed this in in our departmental reports last week. It was expected that these permits would be staff level permits. However, because of the fact that we're talking about a multi day event on the Avenue of Flags, it will be required to have a special use permit that is approved by the planning commission. And so we, or no, I'm sorry, it will be approved by the city council, not the planning commission. And so we will bring that forward to the the city council for consideration, along with all of the backup material to include, you know, traffic control, security, parking, all those issues that will be that will need to be addressed leading up to that. We're going to try and bring that to you as quickly as possible, hopefully in September, so as to give the event organizers enough time to make changes should they decide that that's necessary. Or should the city council decline to approve the permit? It will be part of the regular meeting, yes. Okay. If you have any questions on the event that I can answer right now, I'd be happy to. Otherwise, just stay tuned, we'll bring that to you as soon as possible. With that, I'll conclude my report.
You're calling the community.
It's a I'm calling it a community carnival, the 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 name they've come up with is Bilton Fall Fest.
It was just a comment, the when they had that in solving, it was great. All the locals just loved it.
I mean, except for a couple of them that, you know, logistically were included.
One of the the guys that was discluded was the pizza the pizza guy. So he got it, went and got his pizza oven, put it out in the street and jumped in. So it's a it's a participative time and with the warning and with the with everybody getting into it, then the businesses, I'm sure, will make the commendations to.
The the organizers has indicated that any business currently existing along the avenue will be welcomed to. will be welcome to have a, uh, a, a space within the carnival grounds. And any nonprofit within, uh, the valley can set up a table or a booth inside the carnival grounds as well, so.
Yeah, but then that was fun. It was, it was, uh, very good. Thanks.
We get out.
We have to go solving.
Not anymore, huh? Okay, anymore? With that, I am adjourning this meeting. We'll see you August twenty-six, six P M. at the Willamston House.